Call the meeting to order for June 23rd at 6:32 PM. The invocation will be from Paul Anderson from First Presbyterian Church. Reverend Scott, can you please do the invocation for us?
Dear Lord, thank you for another time that we can gather together, Lord, in this great country of ours. Lord, we have freedoms of speech, we have freedom of assembly, God, and it's all because of your blessings, God. We never want to forget that, Lord, I pray right now for our great town of Maryville. Keep it, watch over it, Lord, guide and direct all of our leaders, keep all those who serve us every day, Lord. Bless this council meeting, Lord, let your will be done, we pray, in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Praise the Jesus to the fire of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mr. Guernsey.
Span.
Yeah, sure.
Hardaway. Miano. Barron.
Here.
Pettit.
Here.
Whiting. Grogcheck.
Here, by present. District Communications and Monastery Acknowledgements and Remonstration. Presentation from Mr. Tom Easterly from IDEM Commissioner regarding the Indiana Clean Community Challenge.
Hi.
Hi, how are you?
Thank you for, well, thank you for doing the work, we'll start with that. So, we're here to recognize the town of Maryville as one of Indiana's clean communities. Right now, there's 11 cities and you'll be the fourth town that's recognized as a clean community. And to become a clean community, you have to be good on your environmental responsibilities, which you are. You have to have a quality of life plan, which you do, which looks at your environmental aspects and says, you know, how can we improve our impact on the environment, hopefully to make it a better place for your citizens? And you have to agree to do some things that we can't require you to do that are good for the environment. And you've chosen to do five things, the five is that magic number, but the things you've chosen to do with Mr. Lake's leadership, and I know a bunch of other people here on this, were involved, is things that improve your water quality, low-impact development and going back to commercial properties and industries and trying to get them to look at how they can reduce their runoff and get more water into the ground so you don't have street flooding and the water quality problems that brings. Working on reducing mowing and placing some of the areas you used to mow with native plantings, which also helps the water, and the air pollution because you're not doing as much mowing and you save energy, which should save you money, which is always a good thing. Improving the amount of wetlands you have, which is good for the environment, particularly in Northwest Indiana, which really was a wetland until we all moved here and modified it a little bit. So helping to get a little bit back to nature in a managed way. Improving litter control and runoff from dog waste and things for your parks, which improves water quality and just makes them a lot nicer for your citizens. And then helping your citizens do yard waste management properly so that you don't have problems with that. So I really appreciate that, this is one of my favorite programs. What do we give you, we're the government, we don't give you a lot. When we have grants, which is not now, you get priority for those grants. We do always have a point of contact for you if you need it in our agency if you need a permit or something. Now, my goal is to make all the permits work properly for everybody, so you don't need that point of contact, but it always helps to have somebody to call. And then, to the extent that you have things, we inspect on a routine basis. You get notification that we're coming, so you can have all the paperwork and the people ready and it just makes it a little bit easier for you. That doesn't mean we won't be here if we get a complaint, complaint inspections we do anyway, because that's just the nature of the beast. So, we have a plaque for you that says, "This community has been designated as an Indiana Clean Community" by the Indiana Department of Environmental Management. And then you have some signs so that people will know that you're an Indiana Clean Community. And I gave Mr. Lake a bunch of trinkets and pieces of paper and stuff to help remind people. So, so thank you. And I don't know if you want to receive these or have a picture, or you just want me to leave them and go? That's up to you.
It's up to you guys. We could take a quick picture with the sign, is that okay, or is that something like?
Yeah, if they're here, you might as well.
Does anybody have the camera?
I did bring the head of my northwest office down with us and her deputy, Mossles, more or less.
You want to pause the meeting for a minute, or?
Yeah.
Can you do that, come on, you guys come up here, everybody, all you people, with them.
Craig, you want to go ahead and pause that for a minute?
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Thank you. You guys did the work, we're just having sex.
We didn't do anything but say.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, sir, congratulations.
Thank you, Craig. Reconvened in the meeting. Thank you, IDEM. Presentation by Dr. Vernon Smith to discuss the latest of 2015 state legislation session.
Allow me to begin by giving reverence to God and to thank him for the state that's been coming since the beginning of time and honor to all of you, it's a pleasure to serve you and the citizens of the town of Maryville. What I wanted to do is very briefly, and I understand that I'm supposed to be brief and I try to be respectful and I try to be obedient, so I'm going to be very brief. I've given you a printout of all the bills that were enacted during the last session. It was not a good session for a lot of us, but it was what it was. I want to point out a few of the ones that may be of interest to you in case you don't want to read through the entire handout. If you could turn to page seven quickly. Page seven has two bills on it that you may be interested. The first one is 1003, and that is an effort maybe for some of us who are Democrats to possibly get back into some leadership roles in the legislature, because it calls for an inter-study committee to look at other ways of setting up districts other than the ruling party determining the geographical boundaries of districts. 1006 deals is important because it's helping out local correction programs rather than sending everyone to DOC. On page nine, page nine is, it was a very controversial bill, striking down the common construction wage and public works. And I think most of you are probably familiar with that. On page 15, House Bill 1139 provides that the procedure for removing election inspectors and judges also applies to poll clerk, clerks, assistant poll clerks, and election sheriffs. If you turn to page 17, 1161 was an interesting bill that gives immunity for persons who are rescuing kids who are locked in cars in the summer of time, well, anytime, I guess. On page 21, House Bill 1194 allows more of our handicapped children to get diplomas. On page 27, this is one that you may be of interest, may be of interest to you because it deals with condominium associations and homeowners associations. On the following page, page 28, you may have paid attention in the past, the last couple of years, we've been dealing with bills, dealing with expungement, giving people a second chance. And once again, this was an effort to correct this, some of the errors that we had made in previous legislation. On page 31, this will be of interest to you, 1307, because it increases the amount of a civil controversy from six, from 3,000 to 6,000, and that affects Maryville. On page 35, 1362, changes the cycle for license plates. You'll keep them longer and keep getting those little stickers. Page 39, that was a bill that I oppose because it allows you to substitute your safety drills. I think in our schools, our children should be safe and we need to spend as much time as necessary. It has been specified for our safety drills, but this bill allows you to substitute some of it. On page 41, you may not be aware, but a lot of our charter schools have created adult high schools and that was taking money away from our K-12 program. And so now there's a separate line item for adult high schools. On page 55, House Bill 1638 shortens the timeline for failing schools from six years to four years before the state can intervene. And Senate Bill Number 1 was very controversial because it was taking away the powers of the state superintendents. I know that was in the press enough for all of us to be aware of that bill. Senate Bill 50 is a partner to Senate Bill 101, Ruffa Bill, that got a lot of press, the Religious Freedom Bill, allowing you to discriminate against certain groups of people. That got us national attention. On page 74, Senate Bill 415, it specifies that the county treasurer and not the county auditorate is responsible for auctioning abandoned and vacant properties. And the last one that I'd like to share with you is one I think is very interesting, especially based on what occurred in South Carolina recently. But this is an NRA state, and I don't know, I don't offend any of you, I don't know how many of you are NRA members, but Indiana is jockeying to be the number one NRA state. And so now we are allowing you to import, sell, and possess sawed-off shotguns in Indiana.
What page was that one on?
77. 74.
74?
Page 72, 77.
Thank you.
Once again, I'd like to thank you for the honor of being able to serve you. And at any time, my number is listed, there are various leaders here who have my cell number. You can always call my office down in Annapolis and most times I have it forwarded to my cellphone so I get all my calls from my constituents. Thank you once again for allowing me to present.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Representative, there's two that obviously I was looking at, I think the rest of the council were looking at. One is Senate Bill 436 on the big box taxation and how that would affect tip districts.
Yes.
As you may be aware, we have four of them in the town of Maryville. We're lucky enough where I don't believe we have any big bo, any empty big boxes, but the Ross Township Assessor Angie Guernsey brought it to the Redevelopment Commission's attention. We sent down letters opposing that, hopefully that has been resolved, I believe it has, has it not, Bruce?
Yes.
Okay, and the other one, as President of the Plan Commission, and this happens to be in my ward, is, and I made a public last council meeting and took a shot, and the consultants here in the audience, Senate Bill 460 on comprehensive healthcare facilities. We have an $11 million project sitting on the table with 100 new jobs. And the governor, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, already signed it, which has put this on hold.
Yeah.
So I have concern about that, not only being in Ward 6, but Plan Commission President, what he's done. He hasn't done us any favors, as you well know, this year, with a lot of things.
And I heard from you, from your city, your town, as well as from Hobart concerning that, one of their projects had been put on hold as well. But with us being a minority, sometimes we're just a fly on the wall.
That's probably more for the benefit of Karen and Chaz out in the audience, representatives then. They heard me last time say that.
Anybody else have any more questions, Reverend? I have one question on the House Bill 1362, that the license plates?
Yes.
They're going to be good for 10 years now?
Yes.
So, actually, I pay $29 every year that I buy a new license plate and I get a sticker for it. That license plate's now going to cost me $290. So, I mean, I think that they shouldn't charge the $29 every year for the license plate just to get a sticker. I think maybe a $5 sticker fee instead of the $29 that we're going to get.
Well, I guess you're really not paying for the plate itself because the manufacturing of the plate is probably insignificant to that 20, compared to that $29 cost. And they're just substituting and saving more money and getting a sticker rather than reproducing that plate.
Right, because the plates are made in, I understand, Indiana, prison.
Well, they jobbed that out this year too, they're jobbing out everything. It was made by the inmates up until, I guess, as of July 1st, and they're jobbing it out. They said that they can do it cheaper, but you know, every time they privatize something, they say it's going to be cheaper and it always ends up being more in the long run. For example, when they privatized one of the consultsies in DOC Department of Correction, they said they could do it cheaper. Now, we're paying them more. When they privatized the meal program and they started giving, you know, growing bean, two ounces of potatoes and two ounces of this and whatever, and requiring them to spend a lot of that money on, in the concessionaries in order to survive. They also said they could, private schools could do it cheaper than public schools and now we're paying them the same amount that we paid for our private schools. We said that virtual education would be cheaper and we went that way and now we're paying for people who don't have to pay for brick and mortar, don't have to pay for utilities, don't have to pay the insurance costs, and we're paying them the same thing that we paid for our traditional public schools. So it's, 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 well, in this state, you just follow the dollar and you'll find the reasoning.
Be right, follow the dollar.
Anybody else?
No, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Vernon.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Nice talk.
Moving on to the consent agenda, council payable register voucher approval for June 23rd, 2015, and approval of the town council meeting minutes for June 9th of 2015. Mr. Pettit, seconded by Mrs. Barron for the approval of the consent agenda. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Standing committees, budget and finance, Mr. Pettit. Power Park, Public Works, Mr. Span.
No report, but the patching is still going on, they're doing a great job, seeing some real good things in town.
Just to let everybody know, due to the weather, this is actually the first night, good night, that we were able to get out and start mosquito spraying. So, just a reminder, if it's raining, we can't spray. If the wind's more than five miles an hour, we can't spray. So, it really limits the evenings that we're able to get out there and do that. But they're out there now and hopefully, the weather stays good, we'll get to the whole town before, before the weekend.
I don't know how many people ride down Broadway looking at the Y and W property, but that grass has got to be two feet tall.
Okay.
That's all I'm saying, it's got to be two feet tall and eight inches is our max.
Send Vicky over tomorrow, find out, what's that Rex Construction owns that property, right?
Yeah, Ron Rex owns it.
Give him a call, tell him you need to have that addressed. Anybody else in the Public Works, seeing none, Council Affairs, Mrs. Miano, anybody have anything?
She didn't put, we had a copy of the Crown Point Grass Cutting Ordinance, and I don't see it in here, so I guess we'll just wait till we.
I've seen it.
Okay, then, all right, I didn't see it, maybe I looked farther into it. But I mean, I'd like for us to just take a look at that at our leisure and then let's have a discussion on it.
Okay. Anybody else in our Council Affairs? Seeing none, Personnel Policy and Employee Benefits, Mr. Pettit.
No report.
Public Safety, Mr. Whiting, anybody have anything? Seeing none, Parks and Recreation, anybody have anything? Environmental Affairs, Matt, get anything?
Yeah, I recently had correspondence with concerns at 73rd and Taney. Last year, the Lake County Surveyors Office put in a culvert there and there was a trash rack that wasn't there before in the previous design. It's blocking a lot of debris coming through there and they don't really have the means to unclog it in a sufficient manner. So, my request to them is to remove the trash rack to allow that to flow through and.
Or a different design to wear.
Yeah, there was, this one's like a vertical trash rack, which most, most of the designs you see are like an angle and that comes down, open space at the bottom, which we have a few spares of those, which we can, you know, donate to the county and let them try it out there and take this one off of there because it's causing some issues over there.
You know, the cemetery was really concerned that we did put a trash rack on there, that they were not getting the debris now.
Yeah.
What's the update with that as far as the easement, are we ready to go with that?
Well, the cemetery requested information from Lake County Surveyors Office and I have a draft letter from the county surveyor. Ultimately, they want to know who's responsible for maintenance of their quote-unquote pond, which is actually Kaiser Ditch. And it is the Lake County Surveyors Office, seeing as how it is Kaiser Ditch. And seeing as how a majority of sediment, if you look at this picture, I took a picture actually across from our pond at this, about two minutes after this, and video showing how much sediment comes in through Kaiser Ditch versus on the other side of Taft from our pond. Our water's clean coming through into that pond and Kaiser Ditch is looking like this, you know, a muddy mess. And I don't want us to be on the hook for sediment removal when it's really not our conveyance that's contributing to the deposition of sediment within their property, so.
But he did grant us the easement, right?
Not yet, they got to sign it, their board has to sign it. So, they want to make sure that the maintenance aspect, and this is a draft letter from Bill Emerson right here, kind of explaining that they're responsible for maintenance, so that's one of their concerns, is maintenance of things, so. But that is a regulated drain, 75 feet from the top of the bank of all the regulated drains is the easements for the county. And we've been addressing a lot of blockages due to the higher rains, you know, we had a lot of rain lately. We're actually getting licensed trappers, a vendor, because we've been having beaver problems and things like that, so we've got a couple licensed trappers on hand, one is Tom Larson. He's, he works also with the county and clearing debris for them. Completing a lot of small drainage projects, including new structure at 7308 Taft, we did it over the weekend. And this is a good example of a property owner taking responsibility for his own property. And he's actually owns a landscape company and he's putting an eight, six or eight-inch drain to the back, putting a rear yard drain to help his property drainage, and we put a structure in front and that'll go into our conveyance and then into our pond, so. So that's, that's a good example, again, of private owners taking responsibility for their properties. We get a lot of calls of seepage in the basement and things like that. And people got to realize, you got to clean your gutters, you got to have your downspouts out far enough, you got to make sure things are working, the grading around your house is proper and things like that, so there's a, you know, people have to take, you know, responsibility for their own, own properties. And we have our jurisdiction and they have their responsibilities. Got a couple grants we're looking to apply for, Hazard Mitigation Assistance Grant. We're doing that with Robinson Engineering for the Meadowdale Watershed. And then an OCA grant, which is the Office of Community Rural Affairs. We got a proposal from a company called Shusberry and Kaiser Consulting. And so we're going to pursue that for the Kaiser Ditch Watershed, which mostly entails Taney Ditch. So, when the crossing's there, so, and that's all ahead.
Anybody else on our environmental affairs? Seeing none, Elections and Public Relations, Mrs. Miano, anybody have anything? Economic Development, Mr. Pettit.
No report.
Utility Liaison, Mrs. Barron.
Nope, just waiting in benches.
Abandoned Properties, Mr. Hardaway.
There's an ordinance and I don't see it added, but I'd like to.
I think we're gonna, we're gonna have to amend the agenda to add that to.
I guess I'd like to make a motion that we amend the agenda to add ordinance Number 1516 at this time.
Second.
Or first, on the first reading?
Motion for Ordinance 1516 to be added to the agenda, motion by Mr. Hardaway, seconded by Mr. Span. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
That's it, we like, I'd like to thank everybody that attended the Building One America Roundtable Discussion that we had on the 12th. We had a lot of good dialogue with the city of Hobart and we're going to look to start working with other communities and collaborate on this abandoned and blighted building so that we can see what other people are doing and see what the best practices are, so that we're not trying to always, you know, figure out what we're doing and see, and get some input from other people. Because everybody else is trying to do something, it's just, you know, we, we just need to collaborate a little bit more. We're going to have our meeting tomorrow morning at 11 o'clock and hopefully.
We're at like a six or seven in our steps in most other communities that want to.
Yeah, they, yeah, they.
They're kind of not real, they know they got abandoned houses, but they don't want to talk about it.
Right, you know.
We don't mind, we don't mind talking about it.
Well, no, we don't mind talking about ours because if we don't talk about them at some point, one day we'll wake up and we'll be inundated with abandoned houses and we'll be saying, where did all this come from? So I'd rather take the, take the lead like we continue to do on that. So, I'd like to thank everybody again for their attendance and their input. That's all I got.
Anybody else on abandoned properties? Seeing none, General Ordinance, ordinance on the first reading is the Ordinance 15-15, an ordinance of the town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, providing that the zoning ordinance be amended by establishing the Fourth Amendment to create Century Plaza Plan Unit Development for Revision of Interior Access Road and Private Drives from Outlet Tracks and creating Track 18 for the future commercial development. Motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pettit, seconded by Mr. Hardaway for approval of Ordinance 15-15. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Mr. Guernsey.
Span. Hardaway.
Yeah.
Barron.
Yes.
Pettit.
Yes.
Grogcheck.
Yes, motion carries. Ordinance 15-16, an ordinance of the Town Council of the town of Maryville, Indiana, establish a vacant building registration and maintenance program.
I'd like to make one comment before this is considered by the board and it is that this ordinance still requires thorough review by the town council. It's here on first reading, so prior to its final adoption, it will be, it'll need to go through some final refinements and review by the town. It's also patterned after the South Bend Vacant Building Registration and Maintenance Ordinance. We understand they've had some success with their program, so we modeled it somewhat after theirs. This one will add significant duties to the Code Enforcement Officer, Vicky Banel, so it's important that she take a look at it and make sure that she understands the additional responsibility that'll carry for her. And we would like to get her feedback as part of the process to review this and refine it.
Yeah, I, I forwarded a copy of it to her this afternoon. And I'd also like to, for everyone to take a look at under Section 6-328, not right now, but at your leisure before we finalize.
Exactly where I went, Rich.
Right, before we approved this Number Two and Number Three. We have to have some conversations about those things, the fee structure there. I'm thinking that we're not going to be that expensive.
Well, wouldn't that be something to do with the, like, the rental registry?
That's what I thought, Tom, are we gonna, and not, not the same, but are we going to run into the same roadblock where an association is going to come up and say, yeah, I got three of my 10 units vacant and you're going to hit me for this fee?
That's the reason why we're going to talk about it. That's the reason why we're not going to go that expensive with it, you know, and Attorney Buscemi just put that in there. We didn't have a conversation about it. But before we go to the second reading on this thing, we will have an extensive conversation on it because $500 is just way out of the ballpark for this thing.
Is this something that you guys can review in your committee and then bring back maybe some?
We're going to review it, we're going to have a conversation with it tomorrow. But, yeah, so, you know, we can prove it on first reading today and I'll make the motion that we do approve it today on the first reading.
I'll second it.
Motion by Mr. Hardaway for the approval of Ordinance 15-16 and seconded by Mr. Pettit. Any other discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, Mr. Guernsey.
Span.
Yes.
Hardaway.
Yeah.
Barron.
Yes.
Pettit.
Yes.
Grogcheck.
Yes, motion carries. Second readings, there are no second readings, resolutions, there are no resolutions, PCA action. Petitioners, butcher this here, I think, maybe Mika Johnson and Hall Swarcik. Request, what's that?
Surlick.
Surlick. Special Exception Approval for a childcare facility having 17 or more children. The location is 7897 Taft Street, formerly known as Promenade Hall, owning a C3 Highway Commercial and case number is Z18E6-0515. Hi, how are you? Miranda, you have any, on this?
The Board of Zoning Appeals approved this with a four to zero approval. There was one member absent. They feel that this is a real good use for that piece of property. However, they want to make sure that this is approved by the town of Maryville's Fire Inspector.
It's approved by who?
The town of Maryville's Fire Inspector.
Okay.
Okay, so that has to be a condition.
Anybody else have anything?
At this position, only at this location, only to Dorinda, your, your staff reports to the BCA?
Yes, yes, yes.
So that's actually a second condition, Mr. President, so.
Yes.
Was there anybody in, at the BCA, Dorinda, that remonstrated in favor or against? No, no one showed up to the public hearing?
Okay.
Motion to approve with both conditions.
Motion by Mr. Hardaway. Seconded by Mrs. Barron. Whose ward is this in?
Harold's.
So we just have the conditions of the fire, it has to be approved by the Fire Inspector and-
And for this petitioner.
At this location, for this petitioner.
Well, I guess my other question is, has anybody spoken to Councilwoman Miano about this?
Have you, Dorinda?
No.
I mean, it's, uh, there again.
Once-
We're in a vacant building again.
Well, I understand, but I'm just saying that, you know, she, she, at least she deserves the courtesy of having-
She would've been here tonight. Unfortunately, uh, she's got a, a family issue that's, uh, busy for the next week. So, um, I mean, she had the agenda, so hopefully she reviewed it and if she had any questions, we'll contact someone.
My motion stands.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Welcome, Bill.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Petition is, uh, DVG and Company. Owner is, um, fifteen fifty East Eightieth First Avenue, Maryville LLC. Request is for accept, special exception approval for the purpose of a restaurant, for restaurants to be located on lots two and three in the Mississippi Edition subdivision. Location is one fifty East Eightieth First Avenue. Zoning is C-three Highway Commercial. Case number is Z-one nine E-seven dash oh five one five.
Motion to approve, Mr. President.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Pettit, seconded by Mr. Hardaway for the approval of, um, the DVG and Company.
For the rest of the council's benefit, these are the two outlots in front of the Ashley Furniture Development on the corner of thirty and Mississippi, which is going to be outstanding. Thank you, Ryan.
And then the, the address should be fifteen fifty East Eightieth First or around that area. This is the A- Ashley Furniture.
Set at one fifty East-
Yeah.
Fifteen fifty for the record, East Eightieth First Avenue.
And just an FYI to, to the rest of the folks, I told Ryan this story. I reached out to Ashley Furniture as a board member of the Crossroads Chamber for the cornrows. They donated, donated twenty-five hundred dollars. They were the presenting sponsor. They're not even breaking ground and they're stepping up in our community like that. That's outstanding.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan.
Any old business?
Mr. President, there's one item that we all got in the, in our mailboxes, I think. And I just wanna commend Chief Yurga and our Fire Inspector and Dorinda and all the building inspectors that went out, uh, to the Deluxe Inn. Uh, we all got the communication that Phil Topar shut that down with the assistance, I believe, of the town court. Um, two pages of violations, I think, or is it three?
Well, there was-
Actually, two. Um, Dorinda was in there, uh, Ed, I think, has been in there, Phil's been in there. Uh, it's an absolute disaster. Uh, I don't know if the gentleman can, can reopen this thing, get the permits and, and get it approved. Um, Bruce and I kicked around a couple ideas that if this thing becomes abandoned and goes to, I don't know, Rich, if this would fall, commercial would fall under your auspice and-
At some point it will.
You know, it's a big building to try and take down. It is in the Broadway Tiff District, so, uh, there's the ability there. But, uh, I just wanted to, to thank all the departments and staff that worked on this to, uh, to take care of it. It's unfortunate, people got displaced. We heard the people at the microphone that got displaced. Um, there's no excuse for operating a business in Maryville like this. So thank you, guys, for doing everything on that.
I was by there today and it looked like there was only one car in the parking lot and, uh, there was an abandoned boat.
That was a property manager.
Waiting on waste management, not garbage man.
Oh, it was actually Republic's dog, too.
Whoever it is, that's, you know, uh, at, at some point it probably gonna get touched on, but I, I think that maybe we hopefully gonna have a conversation with the owner to see what his intent is.
Yep.
And once we figure out what his intent is, uh, then we'll go from there.
Okay. I do have one other quick item, Mr. President, uh, probably under your environmental committee. Um, I don't know if the rest of the councils received this phone call. One of my constituents on Randolph said he was solicited by a new trash hauler that's claiming a cheaper rate, dramatically cheaper rate. And I can't remember the name of it, guys, for the life of me. Um, Mike Galler called me, Joe, out on, uh, Randolph. And, uh, I didn't know if anybody else had gotten any calls and he wanted to know. I said, well, we passed an ordinance. We're under contract, you're required to use waste management, but there's somebody out there soliciting our residents or sending them mailings about a cheaper waste hauler. So keep your ears open if you hear anything.
I, I talked to him also. The impression he gave me was that he actually found this company on the web.
Did he?
At a website and contacted them about-
He led me to believe that they sent him something.
Oh, okay. That's the story I got from him.
Okay.
Yeah. He was told, though, he was told, yeah, that, you know, it is what it is and we have a contract in town.
Okay.
Well, and, and one of those things is just like everything else, you may get a cheaper rate, a cheaper rate, cheaper rate starting out, but at some point, let's go catch up with you.
That's the same thing with the gas company. They wanted you to split-
Dish TV directly.
By the time you get them around to the next, following third year, you're paying three times as much.
Exactly. So I just caution people to be careful with somebody. If it sounds too good to be true, it probably is.
Not only that, and they're asking for, uh, information too, personal information.
Exactly, no.
Anybody else on their new old business?
You know, I would, something, I, I would like you guys to address the soliciting ordinance in town. I, uh, a while back, a couple years ago, we had a, uh, a company come in and sell alarms. And these are these barrier alarms, you hook them up, get them going. People signed a three-year contract. The company's long gone, they changed their name three times already. They keep telling me they wanna come back to town solicit again. The only way I've been keeping them off, out of town is there's one little thing in your ordinance says the chief has to sign an area. So I've been giving them four blocks on Ninety-seventh Avenue with three houses that cost them two fifty to solicit there. But someday it's gonna catch up to us.
Those long driveways, Gene, out in the Panhandle?
Yeah. Well, Joe, uh, Joe, see, the, the order says the chief can assign an area for them to solicit first for two fifty. So I give them four houses in that Ninety-seventh Stretch to solicit. And, and of course, those are far back, they can't really get to them. But again, you know, I, I like, the only one should be able to solicit in town if they own a business in town.
I thought that it was in the ordinance.
No.
Maybe that's something we need to think about.
We really need to look at that because you, you get a lot of these people, ADT and, uh, Krantz Construction Company, all of these people. And they don't come like, you know, eleven o'clock, eleven, twelve o'clock during the day. They come six or seven o'clock in the evening when, uh, when people should be sitting down to dinner or whatever. And, uh, I just think that we need to, you know, people need to have some kind of little identification saying that, you know, who they are.
An ID card come in?
And, yeah.
They pay that and we'll give them ID cards.
And then if, and then if we ask them if they have, uh, a license or a permit, then they should be able to produce it. And if they can't produce it, then they should be on their way out of town.
And what the alarm company do, they come in and they'll tell me, so you've had four burglaries in the last week on the street?
Yeah.
And it wasn't four burglaries, but they, they intimidate these people.
Well, it sounds like something that needs to go on a town council workshop.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I, yeah, so at some point when we have a workshop, we got a lot of stuff to discuss. Order pizza.
Anything else on their old business? Seen none, new business? No new business? At this time, I'll open it up for public comment. Anybody have anything on the public comment? Please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is John Hillmore. I live at seventy-three sixteen Taft Street. Um, actually, Mr. Wake talked about it already and I, I actually have to disagree with what you said about the homeowner taking care of his own problem. The, several years ago, when they redid that ditch, moved the gas line and the water line over, I don't know who did the, I believe it was Dyer, Dyer Construction that did all that, that work. I believe they did a shoddy job and we didn't hold them as a town to their work. Um, I mean, simple little, little problems like all the mailboxes are falling over that they replaced because they didn't put them in the ground far enough to the part of that gentleman with the lake in his backyard. When they dug that, one of my neighbors was laid off, a union electrician by the name of Ron Barnak. He was sitting at home and he saw them dig through a clay tile. He asked them why they did that and they said that whoever gave them the job told them if it's not plastic or something that looks new, just break through it. Well, I've lived there since two thousand and ten and my neighbor has lived there for twenty-five years. We never had a lake back there until they did all that work. Broken clay tile, the, the guys that showed up this weekend, um, as they were digging, there was clay tile coming out of the ground where Dyer had already broken that. Um, I don't know about all the issues otherwise. I, I don't know, the guys that were, we were talking to who were doing the work this weekend said the water lines were only at three foot deep. I believe they were telling us it's supposed to be four foot for freeze proof.
You gotta be, I think maybe almost five feet deep below the frost line.
That water main is only at three foot deep. They had to cut down that, uh, drain they put in because it would've been too deep. Now, the next issue or the next problem I see with it is now we've got two lines cut across Ta- our little, our little off-road that, so they could run drains across.
Yes.
And they just paved that. I, I just think it's kinda silly that we didn't hold whoever did that work to the, their part of the agreement. I mean, I do, I do work, I, I work at the steel mills. And the company I work for, if we do something and we don't do it right, we have to go back and fix it.
What's the problem with your particular property at this point?
My particular property is actually right now the mosquitoes from that, that lake.
From Mr., Mr. Deal. No, Mr. Deal, Mr. Frank Deal, who owns the property at seventy-three oh eight. I actually have an aerial photo right here of that. And I got a picture of the drain that was put in to cross there.
Oh, I know.
That's out of the problem.
Well, we actually didn't fix the problem.
No, it's not done yet. It's not tapped into. We left a tap, a six-inch tap right here. And actually, this trench right here is going all the way to the back there. Mr. Deal also owns a landscape company.
Well, that's actually, the homeowner that owned, the guy that owns-
Mr. Deal owns the home.
Uh-
His son rents from him. His son's a hem and cop.
Uh, yeah.
So, yeah. And then here's his equipment. He's got a Bobcat, he's got a hydro seeder. He's gonna install drainage throughout the back. Again, a property owner taking responsibility for his own property. And here's your property. I got a picture in the back there. You're pretty much high and dry at this point.
I've got water in my basement, but-
Well, seepage in your basement is, has nothing to do-
No, that's fair enough, but-
And, and so soon enough, that water that's ponding behind Mr. Deal's house will be in the new ditch, um, via a co- a combination of us doing this work here on the road, supplemental drainage, which technically we didn't have to do, but we're trying to help situation out. And his efforts, which I applaud as a property owner, to go through and install drain tile through there and allow his neighbor Lou to tie into that. So that's all gonna be resolved very shortly here. So-
Question is, why, why didn't we hold the original contractor to their, their part of the contract?
Well, to, to what? I mean, the mystery drain tile?
Designs that are given to them to fit on.
Yeah.
So if that was not in the project, that wouldn't have fit up.
And every, every, every tile-
Finished and they realized that there was a problem, an additional problem or issue, then we have to come back later after project's done and get that taken care of.
Yeah. And every contractor knows if you cut a tile, you have to tie into that. You cannot leave or sever that and leave it as is. You have to have continuous drainage surround, no matter what. So I don't know who your neighbor talked to, that Ron, was that Ron?
Yeah, but that's the thing. I can see the broken tile because-
The pieces of tile that you see from Mr. Deal's was from field, field tile, not field tile, but footing tile around his house. He's tying all that into here.
The clay tile went to the back of the yard because there was a drain there. And like I said, in two thousand and ten, that drain was still working because we didn't have water in our backyards.
Well, it's gonna be all brand-new plastic tile now, so.
Is that fair to him that he has to, I, I tried to get anybody to work on that.
Actually, it is fair to him because his basement kept flooding out, you know, as far as, you know, and, but this was a continuous problem for him. This has not been, the past three years, it's been continuous. Plus, we're looking at additional fill, to put it back there. Uh, I actually talked to Ron Rex with Rex Construction. He's got a stockpile of fill over on Broadway. He might be able to bring some of that over there to help him out. So again, a team collaborative effort between the town of Maryville and a private resident resolving an issue. And to me, that's, that's the important aspect here. And so your particular property-
Seventy-three oh eight.
You're four houses away from this.
The lady that used to live there, Debbie or whatever?
No, I think that's seventy-three ten you're speaking of.
Yeah.
She always said that she had a problem with her pool being underwater. So that was even an issue before that road project was even done.
But regardless, the little ponding back there is gonna get resolved. But again, this hasn't been tapped into yet. There's a, there's a stub out, if you pick up this, you'll see at the bottom there?
No, I saw it. I watched, I talked to the guys while they were putting it in.
Okay, so then you understand it?
Well, I, I, I understand what they did.
It's not his area.
I don't understand why it didn't get fixed in the first place.
He's talking about-
Because the, the neighbor that I spoke to that watched them tear up that clay tile, he went over and asked them why they did it. They did the same thing to the drain tile coming out of his house.
Yeah, I mean, if, if they would've told me, and that, again, this is hearsay, you know, I, I doubt if Dyer Construction would cut the tile and not tie it in anywhere. You know, that's-
I, I doubt if they would.
That's hard to believe, but-
Well, I watched my neighbor's front yard bubbling up because they broke his drain tile and had to come back and fix it after they fixed it the first time. And the only reason it got fixed is because he kept calling.
But if you're concerned, is your neighbor four houses down?
No, my concern is the water, water that is seeping into everybody else's.
After the meeting, if you guys wanna get together and discuss this, we can.
Okay.
Sure.
Thank you.
Anybody else for public comment?
Anybody else for public comment?
Seen none? Announcements? Abandoned building and Properties Commission Meeting is June twenty-fourth, two thousand and fifteen, eleven AM. Board of Zoning Appeals Meeting is June twenty-fourth, two thousand and fifteen, at six-thirty PM. Town Hall will be closed July third in observance of Independence Day. Um, Stormwater Management, uh, Board Meeting is July seventh, two thousand and fifteen, at four-thirty. Plan Commission Workshop is July seventh, two thousand and fifteen, at six-thirty PM. Police Commission Meeting is July tenth, two thousand and fifteen, at eight AM. And the Town Council Meeting is July fourteenth, at six-thirty PM.
Mr. President?
One other. Uh, the judge is having a truancy graduation on July the first.
July first.